Hi. All right, I'm about to reconvene. We're just waiting for one of our critical personnel here. How is everyone?
Great.
Good, good. Our swimmers?
Our swimmers.
I don't know what gave me that clue, but... Glad you could be here, though. Welcome to the Dana Point City Council meeting, June 6, 2017. And I'm now reconvening the meeting from a closed session. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And then if you would remain standing, please, we're going to have an invocation from Associate Pastor Jens Christie of the Capo Beach Church. Thank you. And Paul, if you would lead us?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you pray with me, please?
God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with love and restraint. Give us a spirit of service and remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your family confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Christie. Before we move on, Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything to report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one item to report from closed session this evening. One of our closed session items was the matter of the City of Dana Point versus the Headlands Reserve LLC and Sanford Edward et al. The council has reached a settlement with the Headlands and Mr. Edwards in that litigation. There will be a press release issued tomorrow that will be available for the public. And the settlement agreement from the case is public record at this point if anybody's interested in seeing it. Concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, on to more fun things. I have a presentation here to the Dana Hills High School Boys Swimming and Diving CIF Champions. Yes? Yes? So if we could get Coach Rosa to come up, please?
Hi.
Hello.
Young swimmer? Hi. How are you? Hi.
Say hi.
Hi.
So you want to tell us a little bit about your team and what they've accomplished?
Had a very special group this year. It was a really fun season. Yeah. It was a really, really fun season for me. I've been coaching... Hey. Right from the very beginning of the season, you could tell this was going to be a good year. We started setting records and doing some really incredible things early. I knew I had some great swimmers, had three divers in the program that did very well. The guys were able to, you know, when it got down to that culminating meet, the CIF finals, the guys swam really well under pressure, held off all the other competitors in D1, including the, you know, the private schools that have all the facilities and all the, you know, everything they have in our little Dana Point facility. And we managed our first CIF championship in our school history. So it was really, really fun.
We are just so proud of you and all of you guys. And we wanted to recognize this feat of yours, the CIF SS Champions. So if you guys would come up. Does anybody want to say anything?
Thank you for having us today. Well, we all really appreciate it. And, yeah, that's all I really have to say. Thank you. I'm Marcel Rodriguez. I'm a senior, well, I'm a graduating senior this year. And I have to say, this was my favorite swim season so far. Just everyone worked really hard, and I'm proud of everyone here. Thank you.
I'm James Familia, and I'm a diver.
My name is Kai Hansen. I swim.
I'm Jake Ward, and I swim, too.
You can say her event.
I did the 50 free and the 100 free, and then participated in the 200 medley and 400 free relay.
I'm Nate Polini, and I'm one of the three divers.
I'm Adam McCole, and I swam the medley relay, the 100 back, the 100 free, and the 4x50 relay.
I'm Trent Polini, and I'm Nathan's brother, also a swimmer, and I do the tuner IM and 100 breaststroke.
I'm Michael Smith. I did the 200 free, 400 free relays, and the 100 and 200 free, so.
And what's your name?
Yeah.
Well, again, congratulations, everybody. So some pictures?
Yeah.
I'd like to give you a pin of the city. Thank you.
Can you look at me?
Pass them down. Little fireman's line. Everybody have one?
I have this.
Did you get one? Okay.
Turn around, smile. Can you smile?
Okay. There you go.
Let the boys take their time.
Okay, so on three. One.
Okay, go stand with Daddy. Stand with him.
Okay, on three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
I wish to all people that attended a meeting were that enthusiastic as young Jack here. So give him a hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, on to the next item, the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There is no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council, the public, or staff request that an item or items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action. Does anyone from the council wish to remove an item or items? How about staff?
No, Madam Mayor.
Anyone from the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, having none removed, then what we do is we vote on all of the items in the Consent Calendar as just one vote. So do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the Consent Calendar items.
Second?
I'll second the Mayor Pro Tem's motion.
Okay, we can vote. Okay, motion approves for zero with one person absent. So the motion is carried. Okay, item... Did we have any public comments before I moved on? On just general public comments?
I do have some general public comments.
Okay.
And I don't have any ordinance titles to read this evening.
Okay, good. Well, before we move on, then, let's do the public comments. Okay, so in this part, we have comments from the public. This is on items that are not specifically on the agenda. This is just general public comments. We have a three-minute time limit per person, and all comments are to be directed to the City Council. And please, no personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a courteous decorum, as do we up here. We will listen to you, and we will hear what you have to say, but please be informed that we cannot discuss or get into a dialogue with you about that item because, under state law, we are only allowed up here to discuss items that have been put on the agenda. So this, because you are speaking about general public comments, the item is not on the agenda, and so we can't really make comments or discuss that with you. And that's prohibited under state law. If you have any handouts, please give them to the clerk, and she will distribute them to us. And when you get up, if you would please state your name and where you live for the record. So the first person I have is Julie Slark, then Joan Smith, and then Penny Maynard. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me. My name is Julie Slark, and I live here in Dana Point, just down the street. So imagine that it's a Saturday afternoon, and in this case, it's April 8, 2016, at 3:00. You drive down Golden Lantern to the local grocery store to get some last-minute items for dinner. And returning a couple blocks from your home, you come across a horrendous two-car accident, and it's obvious that there's a deceased. And the deceased was your neighbor. So you see that a black Escalade has T-boned the driver's side of a smaller car, which is unrecognizable now. Witnesses who were walking their dogs at the time said it sounded like a bomb. Other witnesses reported that the driver of the Escalade was using a cellphone, apparently for texting, had driven through red lights, and was driving at a high speed. You go home stunned. You wonder what happened. Then you read this in the online Dana Point Times on April 22nd. "The investigation into an April 8 car crash in Dana Point that resulted in the death of a man is ongoing. Thomas Wraith, 69, of Dana Point died at the scene. The man driving the Cadillac was transported to the hospital and is believed not to have sustained serious injury." So months and months pass. A little community of concerned citizens has formed in the area. Reportedly, this Dana Point News article garnered the largest number of online comments, 102, of any article published, with many citizens asking, "What happened?" No response. More than a year later, because the mayor investigated and responded, we learned that Mr. Gallo, the Escalade driver, reportedly suffered a medical emergency while driving, and the district attorney of the county will not file any charges against him. So you ask, "What am I doing here besides complaining that our city officials would not respond to demonstrated public inquiry over a year?" So I'm asking for two things. Reportedly, our police department is very well resourced, so please patrol our streets for traffic and speeding. And second, please reopen this phony baloney investigation into a medical emergency. Why was this driver sitting in an ambulance by the side of the accident? Why was he released from the hospital? So I just ask that you please be responsive.
And I'm sorry that you were witness to something like that. Okay, next, Joan Smith.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor Lewis and Council, for listening. I'd like to bring you up to date on the noise issue that we're having with the airplane noise.
Do you talk into the microphone and just tell us who you are?
Is this better now?
Yes. Your name and your...
Joan Smith, and I live in Monarch Beach, and we're being impacted by the noise. And so I just want to bring you up to date on what's been going on in the meantime. I attended the meeting on May 15 at the Laguna Nogales City Hall, and I'd like to thank you very much for putting that flyer out on the Nextdoor blog. That was very, very helpful. My HOA has decided to notify all of the residents, and believe me, that is a great step forward because they're behind it 100 percent. When I was at the meeting, it was standing room only. We had people that had to cross from the shopping center where the Smart and Final is. They were walking with canes, and that's how important it was for them to come into the meeting. So many people were very much disturbed by the noise. They're very worried about the pollution. They're worried about what's going on. So I'm sure you've all seen the video of the meeting. I don't want to spend my three minutes really going into that too much. And now it's in the news because the president has announced the plans for privatizing the FAA. So the interface with FAA is a little bit strange, and you don't know what's going to happen next, and realize it's a little difficult. Okay? The NextGen project is not fully implemented. There's more changes planned. There's more flights going to come over. There's changes being made at John Wayne Airport, additional runways, additional flights will be coming in, planned out through, I believe it's 2025, 2035 in that area. That means that the planes will be more concentrated, they will be more stacked, they will be more frequent. We also get the noise from the airplanes that are coming up at night from South America. They're coming up from San Diego. We're getting those flights. We're getting the flights coming out of LAX. The problem is that they go out, they used to go out further, around Catalina, go up high at an altitude, then come back in. So you didn't see a noise. I mean, when I first moved here, I worked at Dallas, Washington Dulles International Airport. And, you know, when I came here, I said, "Oh, it's dead. I don't hear anything." You know? I hear it now, and I have recorded and sent so many. I just bought a few to show how frequent they were. But Lisa Bartlett went to Washington, DC, and she met with the FAA, and she took a stack of information on these flights and took them with her. I won't spend much more time on that, but I did go to the meeting with Town Hall Meeting at DHL ISA, and believe it or not, I actually got picked for something, you know? I mean, I don't win, you know? But I got picked. I got a ticket to speak. So, okay, I brought it up because the Town Hall was on the health care. But part of health care is... I'm out of time. I'm sorry.
You could certainly finish your sentence.
Well, I appreciate that very much.
Do I press something? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate it. Part of health care is prevention. You save money if you don't have to treat. If we're getting lots and lots of flights coming over, lots and lots of oil slick, lots and lots of pollution, the exhaust, and really and truly, what's coming out of those small airplanes is even worse because they are still using some leaded fuel in some of the airplanes, and we're getting that. Now, this is going to impact Dana Point as much as, not just the residents, some don't even hear it. And that's good, but they could change that flight path anytime. You don't hear it today, you might hear it tomorrow. But what it is impacting, I live near the golf course, it's just across the street, and it's going to impact the revenue that's coming in. Nobody wants to be out there spending big bucks, and no one's going to want to stay a few more days after the company pays for it if they've got to sit out there and listen to these airplanes coming over day and night. So that's going to impact the revenue that's coming into the city. So I brought that up, and luckily, after the meeting, I got to thank Representative Isa for holding the meeting, and he invited me and Marlene Hellman, who is a part of the No Plane Noise Group, to go and meet him in Dana Point. So that will be probably in the next week. I am a member of the grassroots Dana Point No Plane Noise people. We don't have any funds. This is all coming out of our own money. And these are ordinary people that are just affected by this noise and want back their peaceful lifestyle. So they're working very hard to get as much information as possible so that our representatives can go forward. What I'm asking for...
Yes.
Asking you to do...
Yes, I will.
What I'm asking you to do is to please write letters to the FAA voicing your concerns to get on record so that Dana Point is not left out of the loop. I think that's extremely important that we get that visibility.
Well, if you'd like to come back and speak to us more at another public comment, we'd be happy to hear your comments.
I thank you very much.
Yeah, and maybe after you've had your meeting.
Yes, next week, it's going to be pretty full. We're going to John Wayne to meet with people there. They're going to train us on the Volans eventually, which is the new tracking thing. And we're also, there's other people that are going to meet with other representatives in Orange County.
Okay, well, great. If you'd like to come back...
Thank you very much, and I hope, please call me, anybody that wants any more information, if I can give it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Penny Maynard? Hi.
Hello. My name is Penny Maynard, 21-year resident of Dana Point. I'm here to speak on the upcoming budget and reiterate my previous statements. We are a five-star community, and the goal should be to maintain this by adding to our amenities and services, not by reducing them. Both residents and visitors will thank you for this. I was happy to see that we have at least five, if that's up to date or slot, of additional TOT revenue sources coming on board soon. When a community is dependent upon revenue related to tourism that comprises more than 50 percent of the city's budget, it is important that the city work to grow this revenue source. And as always, there will come a time when adding beach to the name Dana Point will be welcomed. This will grow tourism and the related TOT revenue to Dana Point. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, then I will close the public comment portion and move on to Item 16, which is our second budget workshop, where we will be discussing proposed operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and fiscal year 2018 and 2019. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to start the discussion?
We took the grueling time to go through various budgets and see at some level what we could trim down. Think where we are on budgets at the moment. We've done what we, you know, the base we set out to do, which is to keep the budget basically flat, you know, a no-frills, no-growth budget for this time, and put together a plan to, working with a poll of the residents and other things, to create a priority-based budget and do a mid-year budget or an end-of-this-year, but a mid-budget update for the FY 2018-2019 budget that would be based off of that priority-based strategic plan and a five-year forecast that we could put together in terms of revenue and expenses. What I would like to do, again, is remind the all of us and the council, as we work through it, that about three years down the road, we have a cliff that we want to avoid driving off of about $1.648 million. So each thing we can do to structurally improve our expenses in each of the years leading up to that will make it a lot easier to avoid that, or at least reduce that cliff so we can actually attack it. So I have a couple of things that I would like to at least bring out as recommendations that we could ask staff to do. First of all, I think when you look through the budgets, as we talked before, like most budgets, the staff did an excellent job of going through and looking at what they, you know, what they spent, what they thought they could forecast spending, and add a little bit of cushion to it to make sure that they had the room they needed to maneuver a little bit. But when you, you know, add enough cushion among various departments, you end up with some cushion that could maybe be squashed down a little bit into a city-level cushion as opposed to an activity or department by... cushion as opposed to an activity or, or department by department budget. So I would, and basically, when I went through the numbers and just where we are on what we have to work with, from the numbers, the Police Services Budget, which we've approved at this point, is about $12.5 million, and the Staff Salaries and Benefits Budget adds another $8 million, so those are relatively fixed and not real, you know, not real compressible at the moment, although we can still take a look at them as we go through the year. But that leaves us about $13 million that are basically in services and materials that give us a little, you know, deserve a closer look. Ultimately, you know, if we could carve 4% to 4.5% out of there, we, you know, we could, we could save another $500,000 for the year, which would, you know, take a third of that 1.6, more or less, off the, off the table. I would like to see if, I would like to recommend that we ask staff to go back through their budgets and just take a careful look to see if, you know, what wiggle room they have, and maybe shift some of their, their expenses into contingency fund that's sort of at the city level as opposed to the department level, so I feel like the likelihood that every department will need a contingency in the same year is low enough that we could put it into a, a fund and move it as we needed to, and, and work toward that lower budget. So I don't know if I have any of my fellow council members who would be willing to, you know, back me up on making an ask of this, of the staff just to go through, I'd look at, if we could, if we could come up with their recommendations. I would like to come back and, and with that, to tell me whether they think service would be impacted by cutting, you know, that, so we don't accidentally ask them to cut service. If we do, we know, but I think just in looking through the budgets carefully and finding out where they could squeeze a little bit, if we could, if we could get that, again, out of the materials and services part of their budget, if we could get 4% or 5%, it would be a huge, huge help on going forward in the budget, so. I don't know what your thoughts of my fellow council members are on that, but I'd certainly like you to weigh in and let me know if it makes good sense.
So, so that I have this clear, so it looks like our expenditures are about $34.1 million, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we're looking for, do we have that other slide, please? Okay, so this is the slide Mr. Kilabou prepared for us, based on the Financial Review Committee's information, and we're, it's the 2020 number that we're focused on right now, the $1,648,098, is that right?
That's correct, and, and just to be clear, the budget that we're working right now on are the two budget, the two years leading into that, so the 2018, 2019 budget, and so if we make no correction in either of those two years, we will come to that, you know, issue, so we have to, hopefully, we will deal with it, you know, and, and some of it at least in each of these two years, and, and make that more workable number.
Okay, so when we look at our operating expenditure slide with the graph, the pie graph, if we could toggle, okay. The Public Safety and Personnel Services is approximately $21.2 million of the $34.1 million total expenditures, is that correct?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
The Public Safety and the Personnel Services combined
Yeah.
Total about $21.2 million of our $34.1 expenditures.
That's correct.
Leaving us the $12.9 million that we're going to try to cull from, to get our $1.648.
I rounded it to 13 million, but, you know, yeah, but that's correct, that's where, that's where, that's where, that's where we have the, where I think we have a little bit of room to see what we can work.
And if we were to, if we were to get $1,648,000 from what's left after Personnel Services and Public Safety, we need to get about a 13.7% reduction total from those items, correct?
That's correct.
And so we're trying to do it over three years?
Yes, I was hoping we could get, you know, roughly a third of it this year, right?
Which is about 4.2% each year.
Yeah, right.
And then that leaves us in 2020 with no def, no operating deficit and no operating surplus, is that what I'm hearing?
Right, basically, it allows us to run flat. Now, I hope we'll do better than that as we move forward and start to get into priority, but we need to start, we need to start the look, so anyway. I think our, I think our fellow council member down on the far end has something to weigh in on, too.
Mr. Tomlinson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Is this an item that Mr. Kilabou is gonna give a report on, a staff report, or are we going, it sounds like we've kinda drifted into comments, and there's probably some members of the public that'd like to speak.
I'd be, yeah, oh, sorry.
It sounds like we've just drifted in discussion a little bit, and I'd like to hear the public's comments, too, and, and.
I was, and thank you. I was just giving some background as to kind of recapping, because we went through all this last time, but I don't know if everybody was here, if everybody's listening. So I kinda wanted to give background and context, so people know what we're talking about when we start.
Yeah, so this is kinda where we left off.
It's a prequel to Mr. Kilabou's report, okay, thank you.
Get the staff report and the public comments, yes.
Okay, so now, I'm ready for, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Real quickly, just to state what's, what's in the document in front of you. First of all, this is a public hearing. City budgets have to be discussed and adopted at public hearings, so this was a duly noticed public hearing. Included in the packet for your discussion tonight is the, an actual resolution to adopt the operating and capital improvement budget for the two years ahead of us here. It's also a resolution establishing an appropriation limit, also a requirement under the California Government Code. There's also a resolution adopting a seven-year capital improvement program that is a requirement for some of our funding sources. There's also a renewed measure, M2, county measure M2 eligibility documentation. There's also a request to close current capital projects where there's remaining budget balance funds that we've got contemplated in the next two-year budget, so we're asking to close that list of projects. And there's also a vehicle leasing program, contracts included here, both leasing and maintenance. So those are in the documents in front of you here. Technically, you could adopt the budget tonight. I think staff, in consultation with the council over the last six weeks or so, and also discussions with the FRC, I think there's some desire to allow the Financial Review Committee, the city's Financial Review Committee, to have some further discussions. We do have a scheduled meeting on June 13th, so technically, the budget could be adopted tonight. Staff's recommending that this hearing, when all the discussions are done tonight, be continued to the meet, the meeting of June 20th. With that, this document in front of you does include some of the general direction from the council at the last workshop, that did reduce the budget in, in regards to state-of-the-city program funding, some other, other program funding in the city council's budget, as well as a reduction in the budget for federal legislative lobbyists that was in the city manager's budget. We've also got ready to discuss, there was quite a bit of discussion at the last workshop regarding some of our community events, so we do have some further information that was requested at the last meeting, if the council wants to get into that, some full costing, if you will, of some of the events, and with that, I'm gonna throw it back at you, and we're here to answer questions.
Great, does anyone have questions of staff before we take public comments? Yes, Mr. Tomlinson?
I do, Madam Mayor. I see there's a couple of things on the, on the agenda this evening on this particular item. Are some of these, some of these obviously are related to the budget, some of them are kinda separate from the budget, are they all kind of intertwined?
These are all related to the budget, and I thought was critical to adoption of the budget, that we also include these other items.
So we will not be, if, if we take your recommendation of not continuing this meeting, then we won't take action on any of these items?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before public comments? Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay, then I will close the public comment portion. Mr. Resort, any thoughts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I just wanna be clear on, on what the Mayor Protam is proposing. Are you proposing a 4% across-the-board cut in all the spending that I guess you, we would describe as non-discretionary? I'm not sure if that's an exact perfect term, but that's what you're proposing?
So what I'm actually proposing is, is that we request the staff to look at where, you know, I mean, with a target of seeing whether a 4% or 4.5% cut could be made, and what services, if any, hopefully none, but, you know, if they're, if it would affect services, we would want to know that, and come back to us to tell us what, what, you know, room they have as they look at their budget and what, you know, and they know their budgets and where their expenses and what's critical to them providing services better than we know in a budget, so trying to second-guess exactly on the expense line, but I, you know, I've done a lot of budgets, and I generally look at what I have and make sure I have a little bit of wiggle room in there, and when you, when you have a budget that has, you know, a couple hundred line items, and each has a little wiggle room, they add up to, you know, a few percent. So I'd like to see, as we go back and ask the staff to look at that, whether or not they feel like, in order to help us, you know, get to, you know, a budget that, you know, keeps us a little more fiscally responsible, that they could identify those areas where they think that it would make sense that they could give it up and what it would mean, and, and, and come back with us with a budget proposal. And, you know, I don't want to try to, I mean, actually, I'd love to try to identify exactly what they should spend, but it would be foolish, so I would much rather have them come back and tell me what they should spend, it would be more, it would be more, much more productive, and, and, and we would get a much better result by asking staff to do that. So my real request is simply to ask staff to look at what you could trim, how close to 4% you think you could get without really hurting, or even 5% without really hurting your ability to deliver the services that our citizens expect, and see ultimately, and, and then I'd like to ask Mr. Kilabou, and working with them, to look as they do that, to set some of the money aside. It might turn out that our budget has the same number in it, but if we've, if we've put in all the contingencies that are built into the individual line items into a city contingency, so we can allocate it as needed to, to the department and contingency, as opposed to having it sort of spread across the whole budget, we might actually be able to manage to it a little bit more effectively, and, and if, if it turns out we can run the year without any of those unforeseen big storms that come across and need something, or, you know, some other thing, then we could take that as a one-time project and maybe offset some of our deferred maintenance and do some other things that would be much more productive with it if we could do it. So I'm simply asking that. We, we request staff to go back through and look at the discretionary portions of their budget, and tell us if they, you know, what, where they feel like they could, they could squeeze a little bit, and, and give us a little more room to work on, you know, a little more maneuverability on our budget.
And you want them to do that in the, the next two weeks and bring it back to us?
I want to, yes, I do.
On the 20th?
Yes.
Is that, is that realistic, Kilabou?
Well, I wanna get a little bit of clarification on whether or not it's a, and across the board, and, you know, as I quickly, you know, run through some of the budget in my head, there are a lot in that remaining $13 million after you pull off, pull out, Public Safety and Personnel costs. We've got a lot of other costs that we're committed to spending regardless, and, you know, something like the animal shelter, where we're in a joint powers authority, and, you know, we're spending $350,000 a year right there. We've got insurance pool that we're in, that's included in that $13 million. We've got, you know, any number of those types of items with outside entities that we're committed to spending, so when you're saying 4% of $13 million, it's gonna be a larger percent of what's left after you pull out the non-discretionary. But if you're looking for, I would rather just say, give me a target of $400,000 or whatever the target is, and let us go back and, and, and dig through. Another option would be, and I've had to do this in a, in a past life, never here, but we could move forward with the budget as proposed, and we work toward achieving a savings in the next year, with the idea that we'd wanna identify ongoing, though, and not one-time savings, that could then address the structural deficiency that we show out in the fiscal year, you know, three years out, the 1.648 million, but actual solutions. And I, we don't have, I don't wanna say there's no items in here that are, that aren't discretionary, but we don't have, what we've shown separately are requests for some of the new stuff that the council, when some of the new software that we've asked for. There's new programs, if you will, that we've asked for money, but the rest of it are things that we do on a daily basis that we need to take a look at. Now, Mayor Protam mentioned, you know, hundreds, or the storms and some of the contingency budget, we do have that in there. We could work toward carving that out and identifying it, which would require, if we do have that storm and we have to incur the costs, that we'd have to come back and ask for budget authority to do it, but I would be hesitant to recommend that we consider that as a structural solution, given that it's in there for a reason, to help us through those, you know, difficult events as they show up. Anyway, if you give me a number, we can work toward it, or we've got the option also to work forward with, to move forward and with a target of savings, with a particular direction to, you know, identify items that would be structural in nature as opposed, you know, permanent eliminations as opposed to one-time savings.
Okay, I just, I guess I wanna be clear, when you were putting together this, this budget, what was your direction to the department heads? I mean, wasn't it all ready to squeeze everything out that they could?
Real simple, told them, "I don't wanna see any new positions," and as we went through, we eliminated some positions. It was to, to keep it flat, but you, there are, there are places in the budget, as, as I went through the budget submittals, where we were, we trimmed down, you know, some travel, we trimmed down, you saw elimination of take-home vehicles, there was already, there's already been cuts implemented in here, but with the idea that we weren't cutting service unless we identified it, where we're not gonna do the annual barbecue event. You know, I identified the areas where we're cutting service already, so I don't, you know, I'm not gonna say there's, there's fluff in this budget. There's room for contingency planning in our, you know, landscaping and streets-related type work in particular, our budgets in particular, because we don't know if we're gonna have those big events, so we still have, we looked at our historical expenditures there, we did cut back on some of those areas already significantly, back to what we saw as historical numbers, as opposed to having the ex, you know, the excess contingency. So, long-winded way, if you give me a target number, we can work toward it, and you've got the option whether or not to actually identify them in the next two weeks, or allow us to work on it.
Okay, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with what the Mayor Protam is saying to actually go back and, you know, say, "Hey, take a second look at it." I don't think there's anything wrong with that, but I'm just trying to get a feeling with, you know, how close do you think we're gonna come to this 4% number?
Like I said, though, it's, it's larger than 4% for the portion of the budget that is actually, we've got room to talk about.
Okay, and now, let me, let me just follow up a little bit, we were talking about the, we're trying to get to the $1.6 million dollar number. Explain that, that's over three years, if I understood what the Mayor Protam was saying correctly, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, but it, he was trying to get one-third, one-third, one-third as his way to get there, as opposed to doing it as you go along and seeing how the numbers play out, you know, year by year, or quarter by quarter, however you wanna put it. But can you, can you explain this 1.6? But can you, can you explain this 1.6 million dollar number? And if it may or may not fluctuate and, and why?
Well, first I want to start off with it's based on a five-year projection. And we went into quite a bit of detail on the assumption changes from the past budgeting practices to what we've got going forward, both on revenues and expenditures. The projection for three years out, so the year beyond this two-year budget, is that there would be a 1.6 million dollar deficit between operating revenues and expenditures with the assumption that we're funding our capital program. So that was a new assumption as well that we're putting in that budget equation, the funding of the capital program. So it's three years out and I want to be very clear and be on the record, and I want it to be reflected in the minutes, that that number, it will not be 1.6 million dollars. It's going to be above or below that. It will not be 1.6. That's a projection that's three years out. It's my, my best guess at this point in time. I know we've gone through it in quite a bit of detail with the Financial Review Committee and the City Council as well as far as what those numbers are. But my best guess at this point in time, given what we have now, those are the numbers.
All right. So going back to take another look at this then, what is the, you don't need a percentage, you need a target number if we're looking for one-third?
This council can give me any direction and we will endeavor to follow it. In the next two weeks, a, a major premise of putting this budget together and budgeting for a strategic plan update and budgeting for a financial policy development and, and the council's addition of the community survey was for the council to work with the community and come up with the priorities that we can then craft changes to the future budgets and service level changes around. So what, what we're going to be able to accomplish in the next two weeks, if you give me a number, we're going to endeavor to, to accomplish it. But, you know, a major premise of putting this whole budget together and a lot of the work that, the lifting that we've done to date was to set the plate, if you will, the process to move forward, to do this a little bit more strategically than what I had been. The system I had grown up with then was, was a similar across-the-board, give me your best cuts. And it wasn't, it wasn't something I felt was successful long-term. And we did a similar process in my prior job of actually going about it in a strategic manner. And it has sustained them for the better part of 13 years now. So there was a lot of thought that went into the process on making the recommendations that have been made. So we can, we'll do whatever is directed, but.
Okay. Thank you.
And we won't hold it to the exact number, a million 648090. We understand it could be more or less. I think that's why we call it budget, right? So with that disclaimer, go ahead.
So to, to, you know, take an example, right? I mean, I, you know, I have a number in mind. I guess we'll have to agree as a four of us as to what a target number that makes sense is. And, you know, and I, I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact that when we made that first go at this and wanted to go from the original budget input down to, you know, basically a no-frills budget that with the, with a slight cost in, you know, well, with, with a $600,000 increase in our police services and some money that we wanted to set aside to do some deferred maintenance that, you know, and, and some other capital projects that definitely needed done. You know, those, between the two of those, we, we took a good $3 million out of what the budget looked like just to get there. So I'm sensitive to the fact that we've, that the staff has done a good job of, of looking at the budget and trying to make it work. We still have a, you know, so I'm, so I don't want to, you know, I mean, there's, there's some level. And my, I guess my faith is that getting to a priority-based budget where we really look at the city's priorities and start to budget from them will give us some more insight in those, in the following years. That will help us in, in, to make better decisions than working against, you know, a delta to the existing budget. Having said that, if I looked at, as an example, the, the monies that we have budgeted for, you know, our community activities is about $680,000, right? If I went to that organization and said, could you, could you put those activities on for $640,000 as an example? They could tell me how, you know, what they might trim. Maybe, you know, maybe the money spent on a concert goes down from 25,000 each or roughly to 22,000 each. And, and maybe the fireworks goes down by, you know, five, $10,000 as we look at all the costs. I mean, it's, it's that kind of level where you look at the numbers and say, I'm, I'm not looking for you to cut something out in general at this time because we really haven't prioritized and looked at those things that we value as a community and want to keep. But I would, I would challenge the staff to look through there and say, you know, could all of those set of events be put on for, you know, $40,000 less as a number? I sort of pull out of the air. But now I also agree, I mean, I sort of went through the numbers and recognized what Mr. Kilbrun said, which is even though I pull out these big hunks that are fixed, that isn't all the fixed cost in the budget. There's insurance in the budget. There's an agreement of how much we pay. As he said, the animal shelter. There's a variety of costs that spread across departments that are relatively fixed. We have in the budget, you know, another election year coming up. Our city clerk has a pretty solid amount that's set in there for what that election's going to cost us. So it's not like she can just arbitrarily reduce it. I understand that. But there are costs, I mean, are, I'll give you, you know, another example. We increased our city attorney's budget from, you know, 700,000 to 910,000, right? Maybe it could be 860,000. I mean, we, you know, it's a number that we worked with, right? $50,000, I mean, again, these are somewhat arbitrary numbers I put out, but they're not unreasonable arbitrary numbers to look to see what would happen if you did that, right? Our street maintenance, you know, budget is in terms of, because the bulk of that is, you know, services. There's 2.4 million, no, there's, there, yeah, there's 2.4 million dollars in services in street maintenance. Maybe we could spend 2.3 and, and do, and look at where we are on the streets. I mean, there are, there are, there are numbers in there that if, if we were looking to get a few hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, you can, a hundred here and, and five there and 15 there. We've looked at, basically at our council budget and we've decided that there's $30,000 in there. We could probably live without. We put 100,000 in for contracted to work with our public information office staff. Maybe 70,000 or 75 would do the job and we'd save 25. All of those add up, you know, to, to make a difference. And so if we, if we revisit some of those numbers where we have somewhat, you know, plug numbers in there and, you know, get five here and 10 there, you know, before you know it, you can be up to 400 and that's a nice number, you know. So anyway, as a, as a good target. Yeah, John, sorry, go ahead.
So you're saying the approximate number you're talking about is 400,000?
I would say that we would, that, I mean, you know, I'd love to get to six, right? I'm, I'm not very optimistic about that. But I, but if, if we reach four, I'd be, I, I would think we have done a, you know, I think we'll get there, I think we'll get there in two years if we can get four out right now. And if we can get six out, it'll be easier in two years, I guess. That's where I am.
Well, here's what I'm hearing. If we need 4.2% of what we have left each, each year, and that's, you know, that's assuming we're hitting this target number, that's 580,500. So each dollar we do less this year is just more we have to do next year. So I would ask that we look for, that staff come back with, if cutting 600,000 more out of this budget and let us know what that does. I mean, you know, give us the information, then we can make decisions.
Part of the reason why I'm a little concerned, I mean, I think it's, I mean, I, I'd like to see that happen. I'm a little concerned. Generally, I would, as we start to look at how we do the budgeting, I'd like to see ultimately us make decisions on, on, on things that we can cut out of the budget in total. And those things, if you will, will cross departments. So if we decide that there's something that we're at a city doing that's, we really decide isn't really of high priority, and then you look at all the departments. And, and so when we get to priority-based budgeting, my hope is that we'll be able to decide to cut an entire thing. Now, the, the, the challenge we'll have is we want to keep all the things, but just spend a little bit less doing each of them. And I think there's probably a little room to do that, but I don't think there's a lot of room to do that and that, you know, that we, and we picked the easy ones already when we got the first, the cut at the budget. So now they're all going to get a little bit tougher. So while I, while I understand a third is a third, right? I, I think that, anyway, I, I, we'll have to, we'll have to decide as a group what our total is. But anyway, that's, that's why I'm a little bit concerned about that.
Okay. Well, if we ask them to come back with 600,000, they can tell us what that does. You can tell us anywhere, you know, less than that. If, if, you know, okay, 600,000 is going to cut these things, but if we get it down to 400, it'll be this. But if we work with a number that at least gets us a third, a third, a third, and we get there, it just makes things easier. But I think staff is in the position to tell us what that's going to do for us.
Well, I, there's one thing I am total agreement on, which is staff knows better than we do about what they have to work with, right? I mean, we can, we can bring up some ideas and, you know, whatever, but they're going to have to go back and, you know, sort of look at it and, and come back to us with the implications. One thing I would like to, if that could be done, I mean, we're not giving them much time. So we're not going to get, you know, them to, you know, to come up with miracles. But as we move into priority-based budgeting, I mean, the real goal here is to establish the city's priorities and to put metrics around how, you know, what we intend to deliver and how we measure that we're effectively delivering that. So any of the cuts that they make, which actually could affect our service, you know, I would like to look at how we measure that effectiveness and, and start to have them thinking about the metrics that go along with that. Because if you take the example on the, on, on the street maintenance, right? We, we send out an organization to give us a metric on the condition of our streets and we build our plan off of that. And we have a target number. We want to be at 85 or whatever that number is. And to do that, you have to do this kind of frequency of maintenance. If we decided we wanted to be at 90, it would cost more. And if we decided we wanted to be at 80, it would cost less than. And they actually have the, the data to, they could calculate that. I mean, it would be wonderful if all the departments could do it quite that simply. They're not all that simple, but, but we can ask them to tell us how they measure their service that they're delivering and, and what a trim of that service would mean to our public and our residents. That would be a worthwhile goal.
Right. But what I, and I, I totally agree with that, but we're, we're getting a request for a number, so that's what I'm trying to get to.
If I could maybe make a suggestion for consideration is we're getting ready to embark on a strategic planning process that's going to be heavily focused on setting priorities. And those priorities get translated into budgets to fund the efforts to, are going to get us toward achieving those priorities. Maybe as a first step in the strategic planning process is you task us with coming back early in the process with one-third of the solutions. Obviously, by the end of the process, when we get into next spring, we're shooting for tackling the whole problem. But maybe as an early effort by staff over the next couple of months here, that we come back with service level reductions, if you will, that could achieve, that, that not just service level reductions, but even in front of that, some of the, what you might call the softer spots in the budget, those contingencies. But maybe as an early part of the strategic planning process, task staff with coming up with a third of the solutions that council can consider earlier rather than waiting until next spring. And then next spring with the completed strategic plan that follows the community survey that helps us decide on what the priorities are, we can work on tackling the rest as opposed to trying to cram it in in the next two weeks, which we will do if that's the direction.
Okay. I, I just think if we keep putting it off, the numbers just, kind of just get bigger. It's just going to get harder. You know, we can see where we are, ask for a number. I think we should start with a third. And does that include, does this budget include our deferred maintenance?
It includes funding for maintenance going forward, best, based on our best guess. But one of the things in our process right now that's also in the budget is our facilities maintenance system and the effort we're undergoing right now to actually do a full assessment and to load that system. And so we can get a, a number that we can actually get out of a process as opposed to what we're guessing at right now. There is money in the forecast, in the five-year plan for maintenance, to maintain the facilities we have that hadn't typically been in the budget in the past.
But this, this budget we're looking at doesn't include deferred maintenance that we haven't done. It's maintenance going forward to keep what we have, but it isn't the deferred maintenance?
Included in our, you're right. So there is a list of deferred maintenance that's, I want to say is probably around a million and a half to one and three-quarter million that I was making the recommendation at the workshop that the surplus that will be generated from this year's budget when we close out the books. My recommendation now is that the city council seriously considering taking some or all of that surplus and tackling our deferred maintenance so that we are starting off fresh with facilities that we don't have deferred maintenance issues on when we're looking at the fiscal year 20 budget. That again, does include some money. Our best guess at this point in time with the annual maintenance number would be, but we want to be able to update that number later.
Okay. So instead of, usually our, our leftover money goes into the capital improvement, right? So this million nine.
Went into capital improvement ahead of tackling deferred maintenance on facilities, yes.
So this million nine, if we didn't have deferred maintenance, would go into our capital improvement budget and we could do things in the future with it. But what I'm hearing is that it's not going to go into capital improvement. It's going to go into doing maintenance we haven't been doing.
My recommendation is we get caught up. And then with the fiscal year 20, 21, and 22, the third, fourth, and fifth year of the five-year plan, we did include in those numbers that are generating the 1.6 million dollar deficit and it growing, we did include funding the capital program at that point in time. But like I said, it wasn't for new things. That was to maintain what we have, all the streets, curbs, gutters, sidewalks and facilities.
Well, then I, I mean, what I'm hearing then is it seems even more imperative that we, that we pare down this million six number if we're going to be using our, our surpluses just to do deferred maintenance. We're not going to be adding to our community, to our improvement, capital improvement fund for a couple of years. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
My recommendation before we start talking about building new things is that we fix what we have and that we establish the budget so that it maintains what we have. And then the priority with the strategic plan might be to find more money, whether it's reducing programs and expenses or finding more revenue to start worrying about building new things.
Okay. So, so that's where I am. I feel like we need to, in all, all haste, find at least a third in this budget.
Well, just to make sure the picture doesn't look too rosy when we're trying to do this, right? This, this 1.6 million that we're trying to get to doesn't set up any funds to build new things in the future, right? So it just keeps us, it just keeps us operating where we are. Ultimately, as a city, we need to find funds that allow us to build and do new projects and, and fund, you know, our growth and other activities. And that's not, I mean, we, so we, we have a bigger problem than 1.6. 1.6 just keeps us whole.
Right.
we, we have a bigger problem than one-six, one-six just keeps us whole, it doesn't actually allow us to grow, I mean, we're, you know, and, and on the challenge, you know, to, to, to quote, to quote someone in this, in this room whose name I won't mention, you know, if we, if we don't figure this out, we're sort of on the march to mediocrity, and as a city, I don't think that's where we wanna go, so...
So, any thoughts, gentlemen? Mr. Tomlinson?
I'm, I'm okay with asking staff to, we look at the budget, see if we can find some more. I don't think we're gonna get six hundred thousand, but we can give it a, the old college try and try to get somewhere, so...
There you go.
I mean, I'm not opposed to giving another two-week extension to get a solution for this budget, and maybe we can find a few things and get there some, I don't think we're gonna get the six hundred thousand, but we'll, we can look at something else, yeah.
Mr. Vazork?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I, I sort of echo what Councilman Tomlinson said, I, I mean, I, I agree, there's nothing wrong with asking them to go back, take a second look, I mean, that's, there's certainly nothing wrong with that, I guess maybe my expectations are a little bit lower, I don't know what we're gonna get back in two weeks, and I, I think to the point Mr. Kilibrew was making was, we're sort of putting the cart before the horse, I mean, we don't know what the pri-, they don't know what the priorities are, so where are they gonna cut? I mean, you could, you could look and say, um, let's cut an entire department, I mean, that'll save us the million six right there, but, you know, if they bring that back to us, we say, "Well, we don't wanna cut that department, they're gonna spend the next two weeks kinda spinning their wheels, doing a lot of work, bringing it back to us," which is why I think what his proposal was, to do what, what we're all saying we should do, certainly go back and take a second look at it, but, you know, after we give them some idea of where he should really be looking to cut, so they're not, we're not wasting their time, that, that's my concern, I think, with what, with the direction we're giving right now.
Well, I, I echo that concern, right? So, to, to be clear, the, the goal of updating the strategic plan, setting priorities, putting together a five-year plan, and then building a budget off of it and starting to look at how we spend money that way, is so we can make those decisions that say, "We're gonna cut a whole, a whole thing out," as opposed to just, you know, trim everywhere, if you will, right? And, and, and we have to go there in order to really get this, the city operating on a strong financial, you know, plan and, and putting, and being able to fund things that need, that will need funding for us to, to continue to be the five-star city that we actually are and want to continue to be. So, I, I agree that we, we aren't in the position yet to tell them what to cut, and therefore, alls we can do is say, we will rely on them to know what they can do better, and to give us their, their best input, and if they basically don't think there's any room for them to cut without it having a, a huge impact, then we're gonna have to accept that. If there's, if there's room that they can cut that they think we can live with until we sort out other things, then I would, I would certainly welcome that from them, and I, and I actually suspect that we will get, we will get some meaningful results by asking them to do what they do better, way better than we do, right? So...
Mr. Tomlinson?
I'm fine with that.
Well, then I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to go give us their best, their best guess, their best budget numbers, finding six hundred thousand more, you know, and then you can tell us where, where we are, the feasibility of that, the non-feasibility of that, where you would take it, and we can make decisions, policy decisions based on the information that we get, so that would be my, my motion.
Madam Mayor, is that necessary to have a motion, or is it just to give staff direction to try to accomplish that?
Yeah.
I'm looking for heads nodding.
I'm, I'll go.
Okay, so, for, for all in agreement with that, I don't think we need a kind of motion, just direction to city staff to try to accomplish that.
So, we can direct the city staff, and that would be, you know, and, you know, I'm, I will compliment the staff, they, they've worked hard at this, and we've put a lot on them. They're knowledgeable and capable, I'm sure they will give us the, the, the best try and come back and tell us what we can and can't do, and we'll have to figure out where to take it from there.
So, it sounds like that'll come back on the twentieth, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and until then, all of these other items, we should probably continue until we get this information?
I'm not asking for any actions tonight other than discussions, but the council has it in their authority to take action tonight, but I'm not asking for any.
You've got four nods there, so, all right, can we move on, or anybody else have anything to say?
I'm good to move on.
Mr. Vazork, Mr. Tomlinson?
I'm fine on the side, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so there's no unfinished business, new business, staff report? Uh, Mr. Denny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, before you tonight is approval of a contract agreement for traffic signal maintenance with Siemens Industry Incorporated. We were able to utilize a recent bid from Laguna Nigal to lower our costs as well as increase the scope of services that are available to the city, not necessarily that we'll use them, but it's nice to have them available in those certain circumstances where our traffic signal poles and other infrastructure is damaged like that it was this weekend on Crown Valley, we hope that doesn't happen anymore, but, so this is a, an example of us utilizing the staff, resources, and time of another city to deliver value to Dana Point, so both Matts and Cory and I are here if you have any questions.
Be sure to thank Laguna Nigal for us.
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Tomlinson?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Vazork? Mayor Potem?
No, Mr. Denny was kind enough to take me through his thinking on this a bit ago, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then I will close the public comment, so the recommended action is that we approve the contract for the traffic signal maintenance services with Siemens Industry Incorporated, and that we have gotten the bids courtesy of our neighbors Laguna Nigal, thank you. Any second, or any motion, sorry, I was ahead of myself there.
I'll, I'll move the whole recommended action.
Okay, so to approve the contract, authorize three additional two-year contract extension terms, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, is that the motion?
That would, yes, that would be my motion, thank you.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Motion carries four zero with one absent. Now, we're on to staff report, Mr. Kilibrew, any staff report?
Madam Mayor, do not have a staff report tonight.
Mr. Munoz?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, council, Mr. Mayor Potem, any reports?
I don't have any staff reports, I've turned in my listed meetings to the city clerk.
Mr. Tomlinson?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor, this evening, I will turn in my council meetings to the city clerk as soon as possible.
Mr. Vazork?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report, I'll turn in my listed meetings after the meeting, thank you.
And I will echo the same thing, I have nothing to report, I will turn in my meeting So, with that, I come to the point where we are going to adjourn this meeting and continue it until 5:30 PM on June eighth. We are going to continue the closed session, item B, public employment, at 5:30 on June eighth. Anything else I need to do? Good.